All right. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the BSR's Board of Education to order for Thursday, February 27th. Roll call, please.
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Schiefer?
Here.
And can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we get a motion for approval of the minutes for the January 13th organizational and regular meetings as well as the February 4th special? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Ms. Werthow?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
And looking for approval of the treasurer's financial report dated January 31st, 2014. The motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? I'll take a few minutes, could you please? Got some highlights in addition to the report coming in this evening. One major item of note that's been in the news with other districts locally, the district is slated to receive a reimbursement from our Medicaid program fiscal years 2010, 2011. That can run anywhere from three to five years behind depending on federal funding and then trickle down to the state. Right now, we're slated to receive approximately $167,613.91 from that program. Have not received the funds yet, I'm not sure if windows are becoming, but paperwork has been submitted over the years so we can receive those funds. Another item of note that will hopefully become a discussion item at some point in time in the future, last year we did a bond refunding of just under $10 million of our bonds that are outstanding. There's an additional $2,015,000 that are now callable and in the money as they say. We have the ability to refund those as we did last year and recognize an approximate right now $50,000 savings to the taxpayer. Doesn't do anything for our bottom line, we're just refinancing basically. Working with Derek Paul at RSA, having them run the numbers, typically they like to see right around 3% before they do them, go right on that threshold. Thought process being as we look at what the Fed's doing with reducing their tapering their bond purchases and reducing those, rates are expected to continue going forward into 2015. So if we decide as a board it makes sense to do this, we want to probably try to move on at least the first half of this year, capture whatever additional savings may be available at that point in time. So I'll have some more information on that next month, hopefully we can move forward on that. With the change to our health insurance consortium, the OSBC, I have a lot more contact directly with Medical Mutual. Been working with them and one of the things, they do seem to be very community minded in this new consortium, they have agreed to create for our district a $500 a year scholarship for students. They do request that we obviously take pictures and write-ups, but it's just another little added bonus of the new healthcare consortium, working directly with Medical Mutual, so I wanted to make award that, another benefit.
That'd be annual.
Annual.
Agreed.
Correct. Yep, that's the plan at this point. I'm going to try to increase that as we move forward.
And that's actually the second $500 scholarship. We also received one from our Bay Area Gas Consortium, which went with academic boosters to award this year, so we've actually made an award, what they had already set aside this year, plus two additional ones, one from the gas company, or gas consortium, and then the other one from our medical insurance folks.
Another item inside, I guess I would consider it enhanced when it's new, it's kind of technology driven. OSBC offers a program called DocLogic, and I guess it's kind of telemedicine if you will. And you know, if you have a sinus infection, colds, sniffles, flu, you can phone in, schedule an appointment, and I don't know if they FaceTime over an iPhone or whatnot, but you can call in to speak with the doctor if you need a prescription, it can be filled with any symptoms, I've never used it myself. Some cost advantages to the plan, there's no copay, I've agreed to waive that, and then it's $38 per visit, meaning a phone call. The savings to us is twofold. If they go to the doctor now, typically we're going to be charged in our insurance plan anywhere from $100 to $100 and a quarter for an office visit. With this, it's $38. Districts that are utilizing this, it's been a lot of growth, they're seeing an uptick fast because employees like it, it's quick, it's convenient. The other benefit, and I'm not sure you can really track this, but they say it's helped decrease absences because they don't have to schedule an appointment, they can call, maybe they can get their children taken care of, instead of 2:00 in the afternoon, they can handle it at 9:00 in the morning. So it's, I don't know if I buy that or not, but I think it's something worth looking at. There is a cost to the program, I think it's $3 per employee per month, but there's some additional savings that I'm ringing out of the plan with internal costs actuarially and working with Medical Mutual that should save about another $156,000. So I think we're starting to see this thing come to fruition, I continue to beat away and chip away at that program, and these are internal costs. That doesn't affect the rates now, but it gives us breathing room down the road so that we can hopefully absorb increases next year as we move forward. So if we can get hit with a 7% increase because of some of these things I'm doing now, we could maybe be at zero. So it gives us a lot more cushion moving forward and frees up dollars for some of these programs. So those are the directions of heading with those things. Just because we've made the change, the healthcare cost doesn't go away, it doesn't decrease, so it's, we're going to manage program. Okay. Move on forward. All right. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Ms. Werthow?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Merger?
Yes.
Did we have an opinion?
No.
Okay. Moving on to committee reports, Mr. Stone?
As far as legislative report goes, I'm going to let Kevin talk about the clammy snow baggage day. We have no idea what it is, so I'll let Kevin talk about it. That is my report.
I can address the matter if you'd like, sir. Today, the House did not, voted not to concur with the Senate on clammy days by vote of 39 to 56, which basically then would have provided school districts additional excused clammy days. Earlier today, the Senate Education Committee had adopted a substitute version of how to vote 416. The Senate version would have required the Department of Education to waive up to four additional days beyond the five that were already set aside for school districts for hazardous weather conditions for just the 2013-14 school year, provided that the district followed its own contingency plan and making up five unwaived clammy days. So in other words, you have your five, your first five days that you don't have to make up, the next five you'd be required to make up, and then any additional days beyond that, which would have been up to four more days. Long story short, that doesn't matter because it didn't pass. They sent it back to the conference committee and the House instead are not scheduled to vote again until March 12th. So we do not know anything until after that date. That's where things stay in right now with clammy days. So we are continuing to move forward with our vocal plan as it's written. We have missed 13 days, first five are waived, so we have seven makeups, of which one of those was a blizzard bag so far, so it puts us at six. One of the six days for makeup is April 21st, the Monday after Easter, which will put us at five at the end of the year. There is an outside chance to go back and capture two more blizzard bags. It would require the Board of Education to just revise the school calendar to make sure that those contingency dates and which ones are used for blizzard bags were identified on our calendar. So I figure we'll have probably enough data in our March board meeting to sort all that out, maybe we'll have some information from this data at that point.
Do we get any feedback on blizzard bag data?
You know, very little negative with it. I applaud the teachers for doing the work to get it up and running that day. They had, we had decided on a deadline, it happened to be the deadline, had to be the first day we used the blizzard bags, so there was some scramble last week to get some things posted, but for the most part, staff, the kids are completing the work. There's several teachers here in the crowd, how's the completion rate been? There's still, the deadline's still coming.
Deadline's Tuesday.
It's 10 days to complete it. Tuesday next week.
I have more than half then.
More than half so far.
And I have more than half mine as well. I have more than half one group's a little slow right now, but the deadline's Tuesday for them to get it in, so.
Anything, Mr. Schiefer, from a high school standpoint, have your case completed it?
Procrastinate, of course. Stop until Tuesday.
It's a Monday night, right? Of course, if we have, let's say, let's say we have a clammy day Monday, it would push out the due date another day out, so it's 10 days in session for the deadlines. Students don't complete it, they do receive a zero for that work, and they're counted as unexcused absent from school that day. So hopefully that information is spreading.
May I ask for clarification as a teacher?
Yeah.
At least at the elementary level, if I have a set of assignments and they do half of them, because I do have kids that are like procrastinating, so half of them are in and half of them aren't, is that a half-day absence?
How would, how would you, no, I would say if they've completed some of the work, they're in attendance, but they would not receive grades for any of the work that did not complete.
Okay, so I am required to grade it?
It is graded work, yes.
It will be graded work.
It's graded work.
Okay.
Yeah. That's part of the, part of the requirements through the High Revised Code, High Revised Code specified that it needed to be work that was graded, so.
So have any legislators, legislators thought about this retroactive way of acting, what we're going to do next year in terms of hours? They all seem to have agreed with that.
That wouldn't make too much sense.
It was discussed, but it didn't move. Really? They can't even agree on what they already agreed on?
Yes.
Oh, they can't, they can't agree on how to implement.
Implement, actually. Yeah, they did discuss it initially. Put your 1,001 hours in and be done. Makes sense.
Okay, moving on to athletics, Mr. Schiefer and Ms. Werthow?
We have not had athletic council meeting yet, we'll have one next month in March. Just our boys lost, our basketball lost Tuesday evening in tournament play, our girls are playing this evening. We have a score that isn't too favorable at this point lately, so.
31-19 and a half. 31-19 and a half.
31-19. Oh, Harvard. Isn't that?
I, it was enjoyable getting to watch the kids participate whenever you get out to some of the events this year, and it was very nice to see our girls' basketball program of what they were able to accomplish this year. Coach Gifford, her first year here, very nice season, and I hope they turn that game around, get to see me. Coach Rose and the Voice Program had a winning record this year, were in quite a few games, and some of them didn't quite turn out the way that they were hoping for, but they competed very well, and it was nice, kids really represented the school well on and off the court. Very proud of their accomplishments this year. On the wrestling team, very nice sectional, had quite a few, quite a few of our wrestlers went on to compete at the district level. No one made it on to state, but we did have one state person this year, Karen Gaffray got back to state, competed again what she did last year in swimming, so all in all, kids had a nice, nice winter sports season, and they're actually getting the games to play, so.
They were all very well attended, too. I was impressed with the turnout.
It was nice, senior night, too, watching all the boys and the girls attending and how it turned out for that and the recognition that they got. It was a very special time for the seniors and their families, and I can remember what that was like, so I remember watching you guys very well, very nice, too. With that, yeah, our athletic council meeting, Ms. Werthow said is next month, 1/17, so moving forward, and that concludes our report.
If I could just add, though, with Macy Shear breaking that all-time scoring record for the girls, you know, that's a huge accomplishment for her. Um, I don't know protocol here, but you know, the board will do recognize her perhaps later on at a meeting or something, but.
I should ask.
Big, big accomplishment.
Absolutely.
Great kid, 4.0 students.
Represents us very well.
Absolutely. Now, can that come through?
Dr. Johnson?
Student Chief.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeez, I skipped right over her.
It's okay. I'm just back here.
Mrs. Stone?
Well, good evening. I just, speaking of Columbus and all their infinite wisdom, when they decided that the Board of Education's Procureur Center wasn't working the way they were set up, which they were working fine, so now we've got this quandary on, you know, how to keep information flowing as far as I'm concerned between the home district and Pioneer. So I tried to decide, do I want to do a written report, do I want to do an oral report, how I wanted to handle it? And I thought, you know, all the paper that we get and all the reports that we get, I know that I have been guilty of it, and I'm sure all of you have too, it's like, okay, I'll get to this later, you know, I'm going to put this over here, and I'll get to it when I have time, I'll get to it later. And I thought, no, Pioneer is too important to too many of our kids for me to write it out, give it to you, and I would feel like I wasn't doing my job for Pioneer and for you if I didn't come every chance I had to give a report. So I wanted to do that this evening. I wanted to tell you if there is anything you want to know from Pioneer. Kevin has been gracious enough to keep me on the email, I saw a school email, you can email me any questions, I'll be happy if I don't know the answer, I will get them for you. Tracy, I don't know when the last time you were at Pioneer.
Long time.
But I would love, if you would love to go over and take a tour of their new renovated facility, I could probably sneak out of my day job for a while.
By sneak out, she means just get up and leave.
And we could go over, take a tour, I mean, it's beautiful, it's beautiful, you could even have lunch, you know, so just let me know. So anyway, I wanted to kind of set the framework, I will try every month to be here to give a report, I think Pioneer is that important, too, to our district and to our students. We did meet February 17th, it was the night of this lovely snowstorm, but we did get our meeting in, and right now, they have, there are 1,364 sophomore students from all the partner schools. All of them got through on January 30th and 31st. They had a second look open house on February 25th from 6:00 to 7:30, which was very well attended, and right now, their enrollment for next year is 640 kids, and that is very good considering the sophomore class is smaller than, than usual. Of course, they're dealing with the same things that you are with delays and, and missed school, except they used the blizzard bags earlier. I think they've missed nine days, so it's not quite, not quite as difficult as what you guys might have to end up fixing at the end of the year. On March 4th, they are going to have the Ralph Phillips Business Partner of the Year Award Dinner, and this year's recipient of that is going to be Kevin Frayley, Brian Worm, Jerry Tuttel, and Ed Alff, they're from MTD Products. And I'm hoping that everybody will be able to attend the all-board member administrative dinner on April 2nd. If you haven't been there, you need to come, it's a great time to fellowship and network with other board members, and they do a real nice job. Culinary Arts fixes the food and everything, and they usually have a nice program, but hopefully everybody can make it. And we did approve three-year contracts for both the treasurer and the superintendent. And then we did have some students who did very well at DECA competition, and I'd just like to recognize them tonight if I could. 20 students will advance to the State Career Development Conference in March. First place honors went to Lainey Malcock, Susannah Prizell, Brian Snoffler, Jonathan Eber, Hoby Kotzmeier, Nathan Johns. Second place, Kim Adams, Mark Music, Haley Chester, Oliver Pausner, Michelle Ford, Jesse Hindley. Third places went to Brock Liggins and Levi Vermillion, Kennedy Crawford and Tommy Schluter, Preston Ford, Kyle Parker, and then we had Kyle Bryant, he was also a third place. And fourth places were Alexander Howard, Daniel Smith, Taylor Bayless, and Paul Holcraft. And fifth place honors went to Brittany Black, Chancellor Neely, and Ronnie Aguilar. So we had some kids do excellent at competition in Ada. So once again, anything I can help you with, anything you need, any information you want, give me a holler, okay?
All right.
And I can sneak out.
We'll look forward to having you back as often as possible.
Thank you.
We don't spend all day.
What did you say?
Nothing.
So good.
Good night. Thanks.
Thank you. And now, Dr. Johnson?
All right, well Sandy alluded to the fact that we had a number of students competing in the DECA competition, and we just got finished with the science fair, and I'll just say that, you know, anytime we give kids an opportunity to stand up and present, that's a very, very important thing for them to be involved with, because you know, if you can do that, there's not much you can't do, and that's just a very, really important skill. So I'm very pleased with the number of kids we had involved in both of those activities. Understand, and maybe we talked about this last meeting, but the ODE extended the administration time for the OAAs, is that correct?
That's right, sir. Actually, during my report, Mr. Henderson will speak a little bit about the park assessment that we're piloting, and he can speak a little bit about what they've done with the testing window with OAAs.
And kind of related to that, and I just asked a question, I noticed some districts have given up their early release days to give students, keep them a little more time to prepare for those assessments. Have we given any thought to that?
Well, and that was brought up when we were kicking around ways to, to get the instructional time, that maximizes instructional time for students since we've missed so much time. We are required, because of our school improvement status, to meet once a week with teacher-based teams, that's, that's a requirement that we must meet. So we're, that would be, yes, we could change that, but then when would the teachers get the data together to do their PBs? So that is something that we're required. Not all school districts are required.
Right.
Not all are in the board of schools.
That's true.
Yeah, we're in medium support this year, medium support, which requires that, that those beings to occur.
Okay, thanks. And that concludes my report.
All right, well wellness is me. We, it's.
You are a portrait of.
11,000 steps today. The Wellness Committee met on February 21st, excuse me, the, it was, it was decided to have Wellness Day every two years, and if I misspeak, please feel free to jump in here. Every two years, so this is, this is the off year, there will still be wellness activities planned, scheduled, but not the Wellness Day specifically. Backpacks program's still going strong, as far as packing and shelving and those types of things, I think they're pretty covered until late March.
So spring sports, season starts.
Yeah. Then through the end of the, end of the year, excuse me, will need some assistance there. Sign-up is out front, so feel free to volunteer. And next meeting is March 28th, and that concludes my report. And finally, our student representative, Kayla Lewis.
Our work dance was held. Attendance wasn't that great, but people who attended had fun. Our girls bowling team won the county tournament. The track practices start on Monday, right after school, and the spring musical's just around the corner, the opening night is March 21st. So it's close. And that concludes our report.
Well, thank you. And moving on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Kimmel.
President, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. Henderson or Kirkland, Director, to give you a brief overview of the new park assessments, which kick in next year, but we were doing some pilots this year, so, Mr. Henderson? Thank you, Mr. Kimmel, member of the board. Just a few updates, we were selected to partner with the park consortium to field test the new park assessments, which will be ELA and mathematics related, and we're doing that with grade four, two classes of grade four language arts. And there's two different components of the park assessment, there's the performance-based assessment and the end-of-year or end-of-course piece, and we are piloting the performance-based assessment April 4th, working with Mr. Vane, Mr. Rule, and getting the background set up so the kids can go into the testing room and, and take this online assessment, and we're working through those steps and hurdles right now. We are also field testing the next generation science and social studies test in fourth grade social studies, fifth grade science, similar to what we've done with the fourth grade and eighth grade field testing with social studies. We're adding fifth grade science to that this year, and testing all of our fourth and fifth, or field testing all the fourth and fifth graders, getting feedback from them, and the state will use that information to determine what test items we'll be on the testing for next year, what other roadblocks and hurdles they need to help the school districts overcome when that all rolls out. I'm also putting together a presentation for our teachers and for the board members on next year's assessment schedule, what that will look like, what our student will be involved in, to give you the most up-to-date, most recent information that I have. Month by month, it seems it's changing, but I'll give you an updated, you know, kind of picture of what we're going to be doing next year. In reference to the OAA, the window's been extended through May 16th for makeup testing. Initially, we had, we were going to schedule testing right away, April 21st is when the window opens, we are going to start testing that week, we are going to move that to later in the week, give some teachers some time to catch up on many of these days that we lost, and we're going to push the OAA testing window as late into that period as possible. Another testing opportunity related to the third grade reading guarantee, as you may or may not know, there's retention decisions are made about whether or not the student's not, doesn't receive a certain cut score in the OAA in reading, then a retention decision is made for that student. Well, the state is offering another opportunity for students to take that test in the summertime. That window is in June 7th through 11th, and as administrative team, we're talking about offering that opportunity for our students who didn't meet the cut score, which is a 392, when we give that test in the springtime. Also, the OTT testing will not change, that window opens March 10th, and we will begin testing on March 10th. My, my guess why there was no movement on that is because their graduation, that's a graduation requirement, and to move that any later in the year would impact schools' ability to kind of put that on the checklist of student that had requirement for graduation, if there's an 11th or 12th grader that's still haven't passed all the portions. So it's a busy testing environment right now, and I'll do my very best with the information I have to keep all of you updated, as well as our teachers and community updated about what we're doing the rest of the year into next year. Thank you. One other item I'd like to address, it's part of the agenda tonight in the business section, you will notice that, or you are aware, a very important item for the board is going to be asked to ratify a tenant agreement between BSR's Board of Education and the Education Association. This has been a process that.
This has been a process that we've been working on for a year now, and I will tell you, there's very important language in there as it relates to the new Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. Some very important language to our school district of how we're going to operate our virtual learning cabinet or educational options program, and as far as the oversight of the students that are taking programs or classes in that program. There's also new language with the resident educator program, and so those are three important language items. And I do appreciate all of the meetings that we had through the summer and the opportunity to sit down with teachers and, and work through those issues, and very happy that the teachers successfully passed that tentative agreement earlier in the week, and it's up to the board consideration tonight. And it's to be noted that there's, once again, major concessions that were made and, in order to keep our school district financially stable and, and keep things going without necessarily going back to taxpayers, it's, it's going to help. We are in deficit spending, it's recognize the difficult financial time that our district is having, not just in our district, but really across the state, and I applaud the teachers for recognizing that, standing up and, and making the concessions that they made, and appreciate working together through this process. So that is on the board agenda for you to consideration tonight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We do have some guests this evening, Bernie and Julie Goshee, if you'd like to step forward. I hope I pronounced your names correctly.
We did a nice talk about Common Core, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that offer. There's actually a federal takeover of the educational system, where they tell you what classes to offer and how we're, what we're going to be writing or anything like that.
It wasn't even written by teachers, it was written by Bill Gates.
Yeah.
Our Pete has not even gone into it. And we feel that nobody knows their children, like our teachers and the school that are here, we feel that the power should stay within the school district.
It's actually in the constitution for the federal government to be involved in the educational system, it's actually a state. And did you have any questions you want, you have about it, or?
I just, I, from my standpoint, I echo your concerns, and I think you're right, we've got a group of very talented teachers who really know their kids very well, and the legal aspect of it notwithstanding, I can't argue against the fact that, you know, the folks behind you and the folks who aren't here, they, they, they know these kids and they know how to teach, and they, the Common Core has, has positives and negatives to it, uh, but overall, I, I came up at a time when teachers were allowed to teach the way they wanted to, and they catered to their kids that were in their class, and I was, and Mrs. Blair, I'll be honest, at one point, you know, she, she knew us better than we knew ourselves, and.
At this point, it's only English and math. It will be.
And then there'll be all the subjects eventually down the road.
Everybody, we taught the same thing, you know, in all states that this time.
And it's not fair. These, these children are our future. We're the oldest ones probably in this room, but, you know, we're grandparents, great-grandparents, and we are worried about this Common Core and the way they, they're trying to dumb down the subjects and make them really, like math, I heard on TV that if the child does a problem the long way, that's the way Common Core wants them to get, they would get two points. But if the child did it the simpler way, they would only give them one point, you know? It's just, it's like they're trying to mix them all up and make them, make us a third-world country, is what it, it's a miles to. And we're very concerned about it.
I have a brief word representative.
And there's a CD in there also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I'm sure you're.
I have one more comment, it's not related.
Please.
We appreciate the seniors that have high school, but it's very, very nice, and all the teachers and students were very helpful.
They were very, very sweet.
The plan is to make that annual, but we had, had not done it for a few years, but we're glad to have it back and.
Appreciate that.
And we'll continue, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Kimmel.
President Murph, members of the board, it's my recommendation you approve items A through I under the Personnel Certified Staff section of the agenda.
Can I have a motion? Support. Any discussion on any of those items? Hearing no discussion, have a roll call. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Widerow?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Yes. And on to personnel classified.
Side note, score 50, 44, three minutes to go.
There we go.
Their best players filed out, so we're closing the gap.
All right.
Three minutes. President Murph, members of the board, it's my recommendation to approve items A through E under the Personnel Classified section of the agenda.
Can I have a motion? Any discussion on those items?
No discussion really, but just an observation, looks like you're going to be without some real critical secretary of health at the high school. I hope you're all prepared for that, because everybody knows.
Roll call please. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Widerow?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
And moving on to the business side.
President Murph, it's my recommendation to approve items A through H under the Business section of the agenda.
Can I have a motion?
If I have some, I can abstain from the whole thing, I only think.
Separate it, yes. President Murph, it's my recommendation to approve item A under the Business section of the agenda. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Ms. Widerow?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Abstain?
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
President Murph, it's my recommendation to approve items B through H under the Business section of the agenda.
Motion please.
So move. Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call please. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Ms. Widerow?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
We have one discussion item?
For your consideration tonight in your packets that were online, was a proposal, actually I included substitute rates from the county school districts. We have not addressed those for quite a few years, and we also include substitute teacher rates. I will tell you that the pool of substitutes is drying up more so, bus driver subs, secretary subs, aid subs, and if you take a look at that report, we're lowest in the county in several of the areas. And just bring it to your attention, I believe it's been six years since those have been addressed, six or seven years, so the recommendation is to possibly go with those changes that are in the, in the, and I sure ran hard copies for you tonight, but I'm not asking for a board vote tonight. Some for you to take a look at, think about the next month and see if it's something that we're able to, to address. It's, it's outside either contract, it's not addressed under our support staff contract or our teachers' contract as a standalone approval, and I hope to be more competitive with the substitute rates. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Stone? Kevin, that's not why our pool's drying up.
Well, because of the amount of, amount that we pay.
Yes.
It is in part that we're losing people to other school districts. We, we've seen quite a bit of movement, we'll have a substitute bus driver take a route and then back out a week later because they were able to pick up a route in neighboring school district that pays three, four dollars more an hour than what we pay. So it is a competitive field. I can sub here and make X dollars, or next door and make two, three, four more dollars an hour, we're going to lose out on the number of people, so.
Really don't need to let you know until that day.
Yeah.
Late notice.
Yeah. Get better phone.
And that's it, only discussion.
Any other communications?
And the announcements, um, just want to make you aware that we're giving a board member administrative dinner at Pioneer on Wednesday, April 2nd. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that, I have a conflict with leaderships, some of that, so we can RSVP to group if I do love to know whether or not you can make it.
And we're, need a motion to adjourn to executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official or all of you. So move.
Second.
Roll call please. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Widerow?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
All right. I believe we are adjourned. Can I make a real quick side note? I wanted to, this was my first go-around going through the negotiations, and I thought it was handled very well on both sides. I was impressed with not only our side, but working with Mr. Sheever, Mr. Foreman, Mr. Schuster, Ms. Widerow, Mr. Stone, everybody involved, and handled it really well. I was, I was impressed. Very nervous going into it because I had no idea what to expect, and it was, it was nothing like I anticipated. So, and we have a great group of teachers and, and just glad we could get that worked out, so.
President Murph, likewise, against some of us are here this evening, just because we wanted to express our appreciation that we were able to get through what's probably the most difficult contract negotiations we've experienced, and, and with the careers of everybody here, and, and we just appreciate the fact that we were able to do so without, you know, even a lot of animosity, and that we're able to come through it, you know, very amicably, you know, it's, it's still a difficult time, you know, some bitter pills for people who squander financially, but at least we were able to keep a decent relationship intact.
Absolutely. Excellent, I agree. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And now.